All right, welcome to the July 18th regular meeting of the Town in Niqwa. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda. So move by, Councilor Gerard. Seconded by Councilor Coste Chuck. All in favor? That's carried. Okay, so then we need approval of minutes. Move by, Deputy Mayor Parrott. Seconded by Councilor Cicely. Be it resolved that the Council of Town in Niqwa approved the minutes of the regular meeting of the public hearings held June 20th circulated. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, so we have a couple of minutes here before we have a public hearing, so we'll start off with the council reports. Anyone have council reports? Councilor Nado.
Yes, since the last time we met, met with a number of different boards. One was Westlake Employment Services, some good news, we're seeing more and more clients at Westlake. So much where we're actually preferring that people call and make appointments as opposed to just walking in. So we're really utilizing the services and our staff very well. We're working on a plan that we submit to the government for approval in order to get access to more funding to allow us to offer more and more services. And other than that, we've been working on some policy with Westlake. And those are the tidbits from that meeting. Westlake, or sorry, Western Manitowoc Regional Library, we met and just before June 21st also, we met and we're looking at our agreements between all of the different communities. Carberry would like to make some tweaks also, just as branded, but we're looking to make some tweaks overall to update it to 2023 standards. So that's something that we'll have to look at, especially with the new public libraries branch, is changing the funding model in the province. So the way libraries get funded is changing, where it's going to be more advantageous for libraries to be part of a region such as what we are. So that's something that we're seeing evolve over the next year or two, I think we're going to see more from that. Our library continues to offer some great programming. We have lots of books that, especially with June just being past here with Pride Month, we've got lots of books with inclusivity and diversity and they've been going off the shelves at our public library here in Niqwa, very popular. We've also got some new collections that we're adding. There's a new Niqwa notice board that we've actually got in the library, but it's going to be installed outside of the library, just as what you see at the post office, but it's right in front of the library, it'll be placed there. There's also an adult book club that meets monthly, so if you're really interested in joining an adult book club, that's something that you can consider joining. So those are some of the major things to inform council about, what's happening at our public library. On June 29th, the Rosburn Subdivision Trail Association, we met in Sandy Lake. And we're looking at getting the MOUs, I know we brought this about a year ago, we were looking at some drafts together as a council. However, we're looking at, I think at the next meeting, I'll try to bring forward that same draft again, we're looking at bringing it through municipalities that way, where it just outlines again who pays for what on our trail system. And that's something that, if there's any questions then, then they'll come in, they'll talk more to answer any questions councils might have. But we're just not seeing it go through because we went, the trail group went and presented to a couple of councils who just said, "Thank you", but they didn't really commit to signing. So we're just looking at approaching it a little differently in order to push that through. One really interesting idea that came at our meeting here was Sandy Lake is looking at getting a new kiosk. So as you're coming into the community through the trail, there's this beautiful kiosk. It's dated now and it's been weathered, but it outlines all the highlights of the community. And that's something that, you know, eventually we're looking at doing possibly to all the communities. So that was an idea that was floated around. If we help repair, as a trail group, we help repair Sandy Lake, then we can start doing that to places here also such as Niqwa. So again, it's kind of like one of those bulletin boards where you list, here's all the cool features of Niqwa that we could have eventually, so that's something I could see over the next few years coming about. So those were some of the main highlights of the meetings that I attended over the last month. There's a bunch more, but I will continue as I know we're short for time here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilor Nado. Okay, I think we'll move into the public hearing for Dale and Sarah Lohn. So be it resolved that the Council of Town in Niqwa do not open this public hearing at 7:05 to hear representation to the variation of Megan Prince, Precision Land Solutions on behalf of Daryl and Sarah Lohn. So move by, Councilor Gerard, seconded by Councilor Nado. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. All right, so I guess, Scott, do you want to start off?
Absolutely. So the application for this variation is V06 2023 N. The current owners of the property is Dale and Sarah Lohn. The applicant would be Megan Prince on behalf of Precision Land Solutions. The current area affected is Southeast 4, 15, 15 West. And the proposal is to intensify the drainage of the land to complement the lot grading and drainage bylot of the town for the installation of tile drainage on large tracts of vacant land within the Town and Niqwa boundaries. And the reason we've been supporting this is the proponent wishes to install drainage tile, which would allow a section of land to be findable. We have not received any information from certain properties. No objections, nobody for. The only thing we've had is more individuals that have been wanting more information. That's it.
Okay, so I think we have Todd Walker here. Todd, did you want to speak on behalf?
So it's only 36 acres, the form says a section, but it's only 36 acres. It's all that it is, it's at 50 foot spacing and there's three separate outlets. So it's all done by provincial standards. That's the only way we can get a permit is for the province to issue us a permit. It's all done under their standards, like every project is, so. I don't know if anybody else had questions on the project? Is this something that's fairly new to the area or just that it's in kind of close to town? Is that why we go through the planning board or?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Councilor Gerard.
So the tile, since we said there's three outlets, will there be any kind of surface drainage added on top of that? I don't get to see that on there, I just see the tile.
Ours is all sub-surface.
It's all going to be sub-surface and there are going to be controls on all those outlets?
So anything that would be surface would be a separate application and not be something that Dale would bother me on his own, so.
Okay.
So where does the water ultimately drain into?
Well, have you looked at the design? Do you have a picture of that?
Yeah, but I don't have it in front of me and I can't remember.
So it'll roll at the north end, so it'll go into that water running at the north end of that piece?
Okay.
That was what you said, the grass, grass running?
It ultimately runs to that little creek, just off the property.
So it's going to head to the northwest?
Northeast.
Yeah, but if it's entering into this, I'm appreciating that goes that way.
Okay, any other questions of Todd? Anyone speaking in opposition? All right, thanks, Todd.
I'd just like to say too, if we happen to be doing that piece, anybody's welcome to hop in the pile and there's a junk seat in there and you can sit there and see it all stand firsthand so you can understand the process. We welcome people to hop in the pile and look what's going on. Whether it's houses or neighbors or anybody.
Did we drive it?
You can sit there and ask questions, so. Help people understand how the process works.
Yeah, perfect. Excellent. Thanks a lot, Todd. Okay, if there's no other questions, be it resolved, we now adjourn the public hearing at 7:12. DM, move by, Councilor Cicely, seconded by Councilor Coste Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Todd. Okay, we have a little couple of minutes here before the next public hearing. Do we have any other council reports? Councilor Cicely.
So there was 403 rides in June for the Handy Van. The Canada Day fundraising barbecue that we did, we raised $1,125. So there's a huge thank you to Niqwa Gladstone Co-op for donating all of the supplies for the barbecue for us and to the Town in Niqwa for allowing us to use the barbecue from the park shop there. Handy Van will be starting to implement a cancellation policy for their bus. There will need to be 24 hours notice given for the bus now. There will be a fee of $100 if somebody does cancel it within hours of a trip, unless circumstances are out of their hands for it, so. And I do want to also just touch on Canada Day. Canada Day went very well. Heidi Nugent did an awesome job with coordinating everything. The floaties, our floaties, the bouncies showed up a little bit late and there was a little bit of a worry there, but she managed to get everything together. And the volunteers, of course, our Filipino community is amazing. We had a ton of volunteers down there, it ran very well, it was a great day and the fireworks were awesome. So thank you to our rec department for doing a great job of that, so.
Excellent, thanks.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
Just that, so the town council attempted to have a barbecue for the community. However, there was hail and downpour and all that and it was an opportunity to drive around town and check out trouble spots and there was one particular trouble spot at the north end of town. It was being, it's, you know, been a concern, but what I was able to witness were all the residents working together to keep the gutter entries unclogged. And because they were working in, you know, effort, you know, it's just like everybody coming out in a disaster, the water was contained and it drained down the gutter system without going across property into basins or anything. I'd like to thank all those residents for the effort that they put forth.
Can I add one more thing to that because you just reminded me? So the rec barbecue that got hailed out, we will be rescheduling it for Tuesday, August 1st from 5:00 to 7:00 PM down at Riverbend Park and we're pregnant, we don't have hail.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Gerard.
Yes, on June 29th, Finance Committee met here. Really, it was a very brief meeting, it was just to review kind of financial state with some of the large projects on the go and start talking about how are those fundings going on, some of the strategic plan. Obviously, nothing decided, nothing determined, but just making sure that we're staying on top and on point with financial commitments going forward with the town with the number of large projects.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. All right, we'll move into the next public hearing. This is 10007722 Manitowoc Limited, lots 54 and 55. So, Councilor Gerard, excuse him for conflict, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Parrott as well. All right, be it resolved that the Council of Town in Niqwa do open this public hearing at 7:15 to hear representation on conditional use of variation application of CU V01 2023 of Mary Parrott on behalf of 10007722 Manitowoc Limited. Move by, Councilor Cicely, seconded by Councilor Coste Chuck. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Okay, Scott?
Absolutely, you do too. The application note for this one is VCU 01 2023 N. And the current owners of the property is 10007722 Manitowoc Limited. And the applicant would be Mary Parrott. The current affected area is 60 Howden Avenue, Lot 54 and 55, Plan 65638. The variation for this order is to increase the maximum height of the building from the required 36 feet to the proposed 58 feet 2 inches within the commercial's highway zone. And the conditional use is to allow the location of a hotel within the CH commercial highway zone. And the reason we've been supporting it is to allow the construction of a four-story hotel within the commercial's highway zone. And have, we have not received any comments or concerns regarding this proposal.
Okay, any questions from Councilor Nado? Mr. Parrott, would you like to comment on anything?
Well, I appreciate the journey that we've had and the rationale for having a four-story hotel in the community. And I would imagine future bylaws will be adjusted so that we may have many more large builds in our community. So if you have any questions, go for it.
So is the four-story partly because of the giant water park going in there for the water slide? Is that part of it or?
The water slide is a two-story water slide. The four-story is to accommodate a footprint that is more energy efficient. As we're using a greenstone product, we're getting energy efficient backing on it. But it also contributes to a more financially feasible build by going up.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay. Doesn't seem to be. Thank you, Mr. Parrott. I don't see anyone else here talking about things, so. So be it resolved that we now adjourn this public hearing at 7:19 PM. Move by, Councilor Nado, seconded by Councilor Cicely. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Manager of Operations, Sidney.
Thank you. So we've been looking at projects that are ongoing. Start with the Luguens Phase 2. The NDB yard tank has been completed, or should I say completed, but the main structure is complete. They've done their damp roofing and backfilling around it. We've got some external links tied together on the interior building. It's coming along as well with the concrete works and then some steel work on the inside. And then the lab portion, it's like I said, coming around. We also secured the new overhead door that had to be enlarged and another chemical tank in there. So things are moving along nice and I do the concrete crews back again, start the upper lip of the NDB yard tank. The Park Lake project is moving along nicely. Residents may notice that there's some clay harvesting happening right now, so the equipment is out there and they're prospecting for clay again. They found it, now they're just kind of securing, moving separately, going through some, making sure it's with it, but they've been doing that. The concrete crew as well has made some good progress. So they've been, all the muds lapped forward. They should be tying rebar in there, probably go do inspection of that this week as well, see how they've come along. But hopefully start seeing some of that main rear structure being poured in the coming weeks once we get some of that concrete, we'll be doing block sections at a time, pretty quite the event. Basketball courts and croquettes have been completed, as some of the posts have shown. We'll probably just put some vehicle obstructions up just to block anyone from driving down there, but also extend the parking site down that street. We've also had contractors busy with sidewalk repairs, replacements, renewals all around town. Some residents may have noticed. Also, the pool water slide has been fully open and operational now. We haven't heard of any major hiccups, there's been a few maintenance issues, but they also may be resolved and may discuss, so. Notable areas of concern will also be the Park Lake and the highlight back 40s that we're seeing dirt bikes and quads certainly driving into those areas. They are off limits, especially the bike park. We don't want to see any quads or dirt bikes running around in there, they'll do substantial damage. And it's also a hint of some people walking or riding bikes now, we don't want to see them run over. Park Lake is an active construction site, so we ask people to stay off of it. There is still concerns of people walking through and poking around. We ask that you stay off the site completely. Residents may have noticed that we've started some Main Street cleanup. There were some sightlining issues at the corner of Main Street and Fifth Avenue. So we've engaged surveyors to mark out where the property line was to ensure that we were removing stuff that was on the right of way properly. So staff will be going down that section of Main Street, maybe gradually removing any hedges or trees, anything that we deem as an obstruction of view sightlines. They could cause some safety issues for traffic both on Main Street or on the avenues. That's everything I've got. Last one, we've got some questions. Oh, I guess the tennis courts?
You beat me.
Tennis courts have been completed, we've been talks. The fencing contractor has been engaged, we still don't have a date when they'll be here. And we're also trying to secure the nets so at least people could get on there in the interim. But I believe our painter guy still has the nets, because he never left them as far as I know here.
Just to comment, I've seen people now with tennis rackets out on the old basketball court out there, like they're itching to eat. I mean, the ideal is a completed project, but I think even to get pickleball there and make use of those courts, we have such a short summer as it is. We're down to about, not to depress anyone, about six, seven weeks.
We're just scared.
Yeah, but those courts look impressive.
Just a question, but to write down to the, where is sanctuary, that street's getting repaired, to me?
First Avenue and Mountain Avenue, just the very south limits of those on the hill are being replaced completely.
Okay.
Profile paving is entirely started the patchwork, so again, residents have to be cautious and patient and understand that there's going to be some disruptions as they remove and excavate and wait for the paving crews to kind of come in and pop them. They're going to prep a couple before they start paving. So please be patient and respect the no drive zones, however you damage your vehicle.
Beanbag.
Yeah.
Well, yes, while it was on holidays, beanbag cars, a cornhole, did show up and I think it was installed down at the park.
Just by the pool and they can get the beanbags from the pool staff, saying they do this.
Excellent, yeah.
I would like to reiterate the comment about the Park Lake tours. It's non-stop, I see people walking through there, biking through there. Everyone's curious if there's any way we could get some more photos put up, maybe we could share with the community?
I could take press ban or answer TV down there, I could name one that guided tour on Control 1. Yeah, which would be fine.
I mean, just even to answer questions because, I mean, the residents are just everywhere you go, it's what's happening there and.
The main question is, what is that noise? The running of water or whatever it is that's steady, that's what I, and I hear, I listen to it, it sounds like it's just constantly.
The pump, the one pump.
It's a pump.
It's good, it's a good sound.
So that big island or the big mountain of dirt that they got, there's any way of leaving it in the middle of the lake?
Nope, that's all fill material again for the bank, that's not a problem.
Okay. I think people just have a better understanding about the project, I get that tours of information would be fantastic because are we still, are they still proposing that that lake might be filled for 2024?
I believe so. As it sits right now, I think when we look at our schedule, they're two weeks behind schedule. The concrete crew is hoping to bring in additional staff and laborers to help speed up their portion on the concrete side, but on the bank restoration side of things, they're still looking at how to try to speed up those construction lakes. So they've come up with some options and solutions, so.
I see they hired a beaver to dam it upstream.
Control 1.
Works for Canada.
Okay, thanks, Dene. A lot of great projects being completed, that's great. All right, correspondence, Colleen.
First one is from Butte Plains Community Foundation. Their registered charity serving people on air, whose goal is to preserve and enhance quality and life in the community. They do this by growing endowment funds and making annual grants to many nonprofit organizations. They serve the area of Niqwa, Rosdale, Glenilla, Last Night and the Lightbridge portion of the R. Menor Saiters Lightbridge. They are responsible for many funds designated to donor advised and undesignedated. With the needs of the communities increasing, the foundation is always looking for ways to grow the endowment fund. So they're asking for your support to increase the existing endowment funds or to grow a fund to support the upcoming new hospital for equipment and furnishings. And of course, they have recognized support levels starting at $500 and going as high as you want, $10,000 plus. You can direct your donation as you so choose and then need your support to continue the work in the community. And I guess the only advice I would give you is whether you choose to do this or not, you do have a health facility reserve fund, which is already established in the municipal jurisdiction of governance to set aside funds for a hospital, so here are your wishes.
Okay, any thoughts?
Giving grant money away to, for them to give grant money away. I think it's best served as a private donation to the entity up through the town.
Technically, we're doing this in our, in the end of this.
We're already doing that.
Yeah. I don't think it was specific, these were given out to many.
Yes.
Or like pretty much everybody was getting these, we were just on their list as well, so.
Agree that the town will be contributing to the hospital.
Yes.
Okay, federal gas tax.
So from Chambers Fraser, this is a report they have to file, it's an annual expenditure report. And for basically December 31st, 2022, the unspent fund balance at the beginning of the year was $953,181 and at the end of the year, a city in our reserve is $1,079,560. So this is just a formal report they have to give to Canada for tracking and recording and reporting on the funds that they give us through the gas tax funding and we have to submit to report through our account.
Okay, questions? No, our CNP report?
This is a quarterly report for April 1st to June 30th.
This is a quarterly report from April 1st to June 30th. And during that period in Spruce Plains, there was 218 charges and 42 warnings issued and three physical checks, check stops. Um, 90 roadside breath samples were taken at the various check stops, uh, checking for alcohol impairment. And one driver was charged with refusing a breath demand. One driver was charged with having alcohol in the blood as a novice driver. And two received 72-hour immediate roadside prohibitions as a result of the alcohol readings. Under reducing crime and preventing crime during this quarter, the Spruce Plains area had five offender management files open. There were 25 curfew checks performed on these subjects. As a result of the checks, four subjects were breaching their conditions. Two subjects have been arrested and held in custody. The remaining subjects have either been charged or there are active arrest warrants issued and their whereabouts are unknown. Under crime prevention, um, they're looking at setting up several larger scale crime prevention projects to help address root causes of crime. And of course they ran the nine P A routine from May 22nd to June 4th in several communities, which was very well received. Speaking about communication efforts, they continue to attend council meetings as requested or necessary. And they, um, are quite often stopping in at the various municipal offices across their jurisdiction to just to make sure that connection and communication is there. Um, total calls, if you're looking and measuring this quarter to last quarter in 2022, 23, there's a very, very slight increase in the number of services and calls that were placed. Uh, points of interest, more specific to Niipua, 35 traffic tickets have been written in Niipua during the last quarter and 22 written warnings issued. There's a noted increase in reported fraud or scam type calls. And they encourage people to visit the Canadian Anti-Fraud Center online for more information, stay up to date because the scams are ever changing. There's a new one all the time. Um, they also participated in controlling traffic at the Filipino Heritage Parade on June 17th. They've been doing, uh, with school winding down in June, they were doing a lot of detachment tours for school aged children. And then of course they have hosted their RCMP 150th anniversary. And they did a little event here in Niipua called the Amazing Adventure, which saw youths from grades five to seven get RCMP related clues, which took them to various iconic waypoints in the town of Niipua. The adventure ended with a barbecue with some incredible prizes such as a PlayStation five, iPad, gift cards. And so 12 lucky individuals walked away with a prize. And, um, what they also do is partners preparing for this event, they partnered with the middle school and made several visits. And they talked about road and bike and scooter safety with all of the youth. Uh, they currently have one vacant position in the Spruce Plains area. It's the corporal position in Minidosa. An individual has been selected for the position, but is currently awaiting a house sale to be able to come this way some late, a time late some in the fall. Uh, we currently have two constables in the process to transfer north. And, uh, one will be transferred by the end of July with the other by the end of the summer. And to replace those two constables have received their initial paperwork to transfer into Spruce Plains and they will be arriving in the fall. And they just hired a new point six public servant for the Minidosa office, uh, which by the time this all roads by fall, they expect to be fully staffed in Spruce Plains by fall.
Okay, thanks, Colleen. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to finance. Uh, you should have reviewed the June statements. Be it resolved that we approved the accounts for June 2023 totaling $2,285,735.74 as reviewed and representing checks 2023-00966 to 2023-01329, but excluding 2023-0120 and 2023-01246. Move by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Sisley. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. All right. Counselor Gerard and myself will remove ourselves for the next one.
Okay. Be it resolved that we approved check 2023-01201 and 2023-01246 for June 2023 to Home Harbor in Niipua Gladstone Co-op totaling $6,795.20. Move by Counselor Costincheck, Counselor Sisley.
7.3. 7.3. Supplemental tax deletion, Colleen?
Uh, so normally we do supplemental tax additions and deletions in September, October each year. This one is a little bit of an anomaly. It relates to the, um, the house that burned down in January of 2023. And it was a 342 Walker. So rather than carrying that through our books, the, the property owners of the deceased at that particular location wanted is corrected. So I'm asking you to approve a deletion of Rule 62200 in the amount of $792.10 due to a house fire and demolition for this year.
Okay. So the motion reads, be it resolved that in accordance with section 326 of the municipal law, we hereby approve a supplementary tax deletion to Rule 62200 in the amount of $792, uh, $792.10 as a result of a structural fire and subsequent demolition of the dwelling at 342 Walker in January 23. Move by Counselor Vado, seconded by, uh, Counselor Costincheck. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Uh, mobile home licensing, Colleen?
So under model of 3032, uh, which was established in 2006, you gave yourselves provision to every year, uh, alter the annual license fee for mobile homes. And what this does is you take a look at what you charged for, uh, your regular taxpayer payers under the property rules and you apply that increase, but that increase has to move forward into the next year. The reason we do this early enough is because under the rental, um, you know, humans that are, I can't remember the name of it now. The rental standards in the province of Manitoba, you have to give sufficient notice to people when you're increasing basically their rent, even though this is taxes in lieu technically. So we're recommending, uh, what the levy increase was, was 9.7% increase. And, um, in comparison to the last year, which was 0.64. So, um, then if you look roughly just for interest sake, over the last five years and equate it out, so roughly 2% a year increase over the last five years, even though 9.47 looks like a big increase, it is not when you take a look at the last five. So 9.47% increase in mobile homes.
Any questions? Can it be resolved that we approve the increase of 9.47 to the mobile home, uh, licensing fees for 2024 under the authority in the bylaw 3032? Move by Counselor Gerard, seconded by Counselor Vado. All in favor? Uh, unfinished business, Colleen?
Uh, so I have a letter here. I'm going to, I'm going to make the assumption that you won't read this letter. The letter came from Mary Ann Lipinski. This is following up on, uh, their attendance at council on February 21st of this year, where they were, um, approached by our bylaw enforcement officers suggesting there were several infractions of the animal control bylaw. Animals running at large, unlicensed, uh, they weren't vaccinated. There was, there was various things, parking, they were always out, those types of things. And they were asking you to serve them some leniency for the amount of animals that they were allowed to have theirs as well. Uh, so the letter kind of follows up on that. Not a lot of significant improvement was made. In March, after that council meeting, they were issued a letter citing all the infractions. And they were told that they had a July 2nd deadline that they could basically keep two, which is what the bylaw allows. Um, there are still four dogs there. They have tried to home some of them. I don't know what efforts they have made. Of course, our bylaw enforcement officer isn't here to speak to that. They're hoping for you to give them leniency to allow to keep the final four dogs there. And I guess that's your decision. Our recommendation here, and coming from the bylaw enforcement officer, is to be a caution of you allow one, there'll be others wanting the same provision. Bylaw is in place for a certain reason. And is there people out there that have more than that? Maybe, but we can only deal with these things by addressing them when they come to our attention by the fact that the community is engaged in what's going on and complaining here at the office. So whatever your worries.
Can you discuss them?
I'll speak to her. I mean, no one, no one likes to be bad guy in this case. And I guess, um, we, we wrote the bylaw, uh, or the bylaw was written a number of years ago. I don't know the age of the dogs. I don't know, I mean, we can be lenient as to saying that we, they, they do have to get down to two dogs, but that is still the standard within the, I think, within the area. I'm not saying that we have to go in and forcibly remove two dogs, but I do think we do have to hold them to, to working towards that. If they're elderly dogs, that they're not replaced that, but we've got to move that property to that point and let them know that if there's a complaint from neighbors that we have to act on it. As, you know, yeah.
No, I agree. I, I think our bylaws are set up for reasons and, uh, you know, unfortunately it doesn't work for everyone, but, uh, there has, has to be some rules in place to try and keep a safe community. Anyone else?
I'm agreeing with that as well.
So I'm hearing there'll be no heavy handed approach, but we're going to have more consistently and constantly. Do you want to, um, you know, extend that deadline for some progress of some sort?
Yeah.
My personal opinion is they've had the time and they're trying to go through adversity. And it's like I mentioned, it's hardcore. You feel bad, but there's a reason for not wanting concentration of dogs at one spot.
I would say I'm not looking for the heavy hand. I'm just saying that we have to continue to work towards getting this.
Make it happen.
Yeah, yeah.
We can't just say it just.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not saying to take down the control and mark down and move two dogs. Cause that's the heavy hand.
Yeah.
And I, no one wants to be that person. I mean, and I don't know the situation that brought four dogs there, was someone relocated that had to.
Well, there was.
At that one point, there was a litter of pups and, you know, we just, that, they were well beyond the, the, what was allowed by, by the, our bylaw. So, but we've got to continue to work our way towards that, that number.
But I do think we need to give our bylaws, there's some very clear definitions of what his action should be. So he's being given support by us to do his job. So we need to give him clear actions, whatever that ends up being. Cease the dogs. If they're not willing to get them to home, cease the dogs. That's my opinion. Enforce the law. It's not a pleasant one, you know? I'm one of seven.
Okay, so moving forward with some.
Mark. I think approach them and say that that number is still has to be, it still has to get moved to two.
Yeah.
And, and I think that we will continue to follow that up.
Okay, moving on to new business. So we have the variation application of Dale and Sarah Loewen that we recently just went through. So be it resolved that we approve variation application BO62023 of Megan Prince Precision Land Solutions on behalf of Dale and Sarah Loewen, respecting SE 415, uh, 41515W to intensify the drainage of land to complement the lot grading and drainage of bylaw of the town with the installation of tile drainage on a large tract of vacant land within the above quarters of the town of Niipua. So be it further resolved that this approval be subject to the terms of the development agreement. Move by Counselor Sisley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Parrott. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay. Deputy Mayor Parrott, Counselor Gerard, remove themselves for the next. And, uh, it is a conditional use variation application. Be it resolved that we approve the count, uh, conditional use variation application CUV012023 of 10007722 Manitoba Limited, respecting lots 5455, plan 65638 at 60 Howden Avenue to allow for the location of a hotel within the CH commercial highway zone and to increase the maximum height of the intended structure from the required 35 feet to the proposed 58 feet two inches. Move by Counselor Sisley, seconded by Counselor Vado. All in favor? Uh, Colleen, uh, water and sewer infrastructure?
Uh, so we all know we're working on plans and designs to create the, uh, situation whereby we're going to have sewer and water flow out to, uh, the new hospital. Uh, early estimates of this project were roughly going to be 4.8 million. Um, we are actually at a point though, as we understand what we need to put the water and sewer there, we're, we're probably poking somewhere between five and seven million dollars now. Uh, Water Services Board is prepared to assist with this project. Uh, their number though that they had in mind as we've been speaking is around the five million dollar estimate. So should, uh, we agree and proceed to demonstration, get a better idea what our number is, it will help us to know where we go forward. Uh, should they not be able to find it in their funding process, of course, then they'll have to, you know, provide the balance as well. But, uh, they've been very good to work with us on this, understanding this is where we do a hospital. Niipua tax district should not bear the burden, um, you know, where others are not per se. Of course, uh, having said that, we all know our contribution to capital of the six million that we're supposed to find for, as part of the hospital project can come in the form of in kind, which would mean our water and services would serve that purpose. So tonight I'm asking for a resolution requesting the water services board provide technical and financial assistance for this project, whatever that may be. Uh, definitely probably half to five million for now. And that, um, the second part is that if, if there is any possibility that they could increase the funding ratio from a 50/50 split to something different because it is a more regional project, that would be great if they would consider that. So they need the resolution before I leave here tonight because they need a first day of mornings.
Okay, any questions? Okay, the motion reads, be it resolved that we hereby request technical and financial assistance from the Manitoba Water Services Board to complete the water sewer servicing extensions to the Northeast Development Project for the purposes of servicing a new regional hospital. Be it further resolved that since hospital will serve the province as a regional hub, consideration be given to increasing the funding ratio to lessen the burden that will be directly and specifically borne by property owners within the municipal jurisdiction of Niipua. Move by Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Costincheck. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Uh, Rolling Garage, Colleen?
Uh, so once again, this is the third year in a row the Rolling Garage is coming to Niipua. They will arrive here on August 13th at 6:00 PM and they'll be leaving the next day at 8:00 AM. Uh, this is an annual fundraiser in support of veterans, active duty military and first responders with PTSD. So when they arrive, there is going to be a public event starting at 6:00 PM for everyone to come talk to them, make donations, view the bikes and whatnot. Um, the local first responders have also been invited to attend. And the legion will then serve them, uh, basically at supper at 7:00 PM. So in order to accommodate the community interest in this particular event, a street closure is requested for Brown Avenue from Hamilton Street to Davidson Street, and this is just basically right in front of the Legion, and the closure will be from 6:00 PM to 8:30. And council is invited to attend on 6:07 to support this initiative. So they're looking for, uh, your permission to close that portion of the street for that period of time.
Davidson's at the top of the hill.
Right in front of the Legion.
Yeah, so might I suggest we close, uh, Brown at the bottom of the hill?
No, they don't, they didn't ask for that, Marry.
No, I know, but just so that you don't have people dragging up, and then they're gonna stop at the top.
Well, they'll drag, uh, during the bar.
Yeah, no.
It'll work.
Yeah.
They'll still have access.
Still have access.
East or west?
They can, they, East Wesley Davidson, they just can't.
Oh, okay.
Just in front of the Legion.
Okay, motion reads, be it resolved that we approve the closure of the portion of Brown Avenue from Hamilton Street to Davidson Street on August 13th, 2023, from 6:00 to 8:00, to enable hosting the Rolling Barrage. Move by. Counselor Costin Chuck, seconded by Counselor Gerard, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, this one, uh, what have we got here, Children's Business Fair?
Um, so this is another request on the board we are just forward. Uh, they're looking for just a partial street closure as well for the Niqwa Economic Development Children's Business Fair event being held in conjunction with the regular markets market. And, uh, Marilyn Cruz actually had a meeting that we produced that she's supposed to be voted, this will be the first time we've had, uh, organized a business fair for children. I think right now we have 17 tables asked for, it's been quite popular. It's gonna be Thursday, August 13th. So they're looking at for that piece on Borg Street, basically north of Arts Forward, so between Arts Forward and White Street and also, uh, the only two impacted are those two businesses, and everybody else on the street would have the ability to go easterly down the street. So, um, yeah, from, from 2:30 to 6:30 on August the 13th, so that they can set up all of the Niqwa entrepreneurs in conjunction with the farmers market.
Okay, questions? If not, motion reads, be it resolved that we approve the closure of the portion of Burke Street from Mountain to the east property line of Arts Forward, White's Funeral Home on August 10th of 2:30 to 6:30 in order to host the Niqwa Economic Development Children's Business Fair. Move by. Deputy Mayor Parrott, seconded by Counselor Costin Chuck, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Okay, uh, before we close, have we got any other business? Counselor Costin Chuck?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that the 50/50 fundraiser for HAN is still ongoing, and the jar is going to be made August 14th at the HAN fundraiser barbecue, which will be held in the parking lot of, at Yellowhead Manor. So that's August 14th. There's still lots of tickets, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Very good.
There's only 1,500 printed, so.
Not mine, I got the winner's already.
So I'm kidding all of you out here, you have a lot of tickets.
Okay, uh, so, final order, be it resolved that we do now adjourn this council meeting at 7:54 PM. Move by. Counselor Costin Chuck, seconded by Counselor Nado, all in favor? Carry. Thank you.